Uh, Diane? Kevin? It's not moving.
This is Councilwoman Clancy. Can you all hear me?
Check.
I can hear Kevin.
Check. Testing one, two.
This is Councilwoman Clancy. Can you all hear me?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We're good to go.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am calling the St. Louis County Council meeting to order Tuesday, June 29, 2021, 6:30 PM. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
United States of America. For which it stands.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the role? Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Webb?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Didn't hear her. Councilmember Clancy, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
But we can't hear you. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, and we'll hope that she can, uh, we can hear her later on. You are hearing her on the screen? She should be in the room, though. Okay. Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a call. Thank you very much. Uh, for the voting order this evening, we are utilizing G., Dunaway, Webb, Tracus, Days, Fitch, Harder, and Clancy. Is there a motion to approve the Journal of June 15, 2021?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The Journal of June 15, 2021 is approved. Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules in order to, for the adoption and presentation of a resolution honoring Robert Fox Jr. upon occasion of his retirement from the office of county counselor.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No. Motion carries.
Please read Resolution Number.
Resolution Number One this evening, introduced by councilmembers Fitch, Days, Dunaway, Webb, Clancy, Tracus, and Harder. Resolution, whereas Robert E. Fox Jr., known to family and friends as Bob, began his storied career in the St. Louis County Counselor's Office, Office as a law student in turn and has been working in the office as an attorney since January 26, 1981. And whereas Bob's notable cases involve prosecuting problem properties, pornography shots, and traffic matters, and over the years, he has done numerous involuntary commitment hearings, condemnations, and demolition and building code hearings. And whereas Bob has a particular passion for working with the police department, most recently drafting and reviewing contracts for the department. And whereas Bob's commitment to his duties and his zealous advocacy on behalf of St. Louis County has earned him the respect of his colleagues throughout St. Louis County government, and even the grudging respect of one particularly curmudgeonly defendant who referred to him as, quote, "mad dog," end quote. And whereas Bob has generous generously shared his knowledge and expertise with newer attorneys as well as students in the criminal justice classes he taught as an adjunct professor. And whereas, over the years, the office has been a great place to work, in no small part because the multi-talented Bob is always ready with a smile and a joke, befriends every coworker, served as master griller at office picnics, even when his cigar ashes were a special part of his secret seasoning. Seems to always know when his homemade baked goods are needed, and back in the day, played shortstop for the office softball team. And whereas Bob will retire from St. Louis County Government on June 30, 2021, but his positive influence on the office and his colleagues will be felt for many years to come. And whereas, when a man has devoted such a significant portion of his life to public service, it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to pause and take note. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council expresses its deepest gratitude to Bob Fox for over forty years of dedicated and professional service to the people of St. Louis County, and wishes him many happy years of time spent with his wife Mary, their children Rob, Tom, Kathleen, and Patrick, daughter-in-law Courtney, and extended family and friends. Section Two, the Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Mr. Robert E. Fox Jr. as a permanent token of the council's gratitude and esteem.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number One.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we need a roll call. Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Really good.
Good one.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number One, there are seven ayes. Thank you. Resolution Number One is adopted. Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to all the council members that co-sponsored this with me. It was my pleasure to introduce this. I've known Bob since, well, since he had hair and I was thin. Well, I don't know if he ever had hair. Yeah, so, uh, and I know your lovely wife Mary is here with you. Did anyone else come with you, any family members or friends? I know you have a lot of friends in the room. Okay, and, uh, the one thing I always remember about Bob Fox, I took many cases to him as a county police officer through the years, and uh, does he have all those stacks of papers on his desk at home like he does in his county counselor's office? But he knew where everything was, which is always rather amazing. So, uh, Bob, we're gonna miss you. You've had a great career here at St. Louis County, and I know there's many people in the police department that appreciate your involvement as well, because you dealt with the police a lot in your career. So, um, Madam County Counselor, would you like to add a few things?
Thank you for sponsoring the resolution, and thanks to everyone else for doing that. Bob is the heart and soul of our office. We're gonna miss you. I said last week, the door's always open. You just gotta get someone to take you from the ground floor. You can come on up. Thank you for your service.
I just wanna say, I'm surprised, and it's nice to hear, uh, the recognition of me playing shortstop. As he had no credit for me, so. Anyway, it's been a great forty years, and a lot of police and other departments. It's, again, I think, government. That's why I enjoyed working. And great county council. And I had many deputies.
We have no bid opening this evening, so we will move to communications. Madam Chair, we have no. Excuse me. One moment. Pardon me. Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, Second District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Item number two, Sixth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters. Item number one, First District. Receive, file, plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of costs be approved, and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties, and that will be the order. Specifications. One moment, Madam Chair. Specifications. Director of Procurement will be authorized. Yeah, um, I believe this one needs a, um, second, Madam Chair, and a voice vote. I apologize. This is for the, uh, receive file and specifications? Yes, ma'am. All right, I have made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to other communications. Item number one. Okay. I think we are. Are you on item number one? Item number one, yes, ma'am. Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number two, Third District.
Receive and file.
Item number three, Fourth District.
Receive and file.
And that will be the order. Item number four, Seventh District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number five. Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number six. Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number seven, all districts. Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number eight, Second District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number nine, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number ten.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number eleven, Sixth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number twelve. Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will be applicable, uh, to item number twenty-two, and that will be the order. Item number twenty-three, First District. Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for, uh, to item number twenty-four, and that will be the order. Item number twenty-five, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered.
Item number twenty-six, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and, um, hang on a minute. Said number twenty-six, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Okay, receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Missed that part.
Moving to add-ons, Madam Chair. Item number one, First District. Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Item number two, Third District.
Receive and file, refer to the Board of Police Commissioners and the County Executive.
So ordered.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number four, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
And we're now in the portion of our, um, meeting for public forum. When you are called, um, please come forward, state your name, first name and last name, and your zip code for the record. There is a timer that will give you, uh, three minutes, and it will, uh, give you an audit, uh, when your three minutes are up. So with that, let's have the first speaker, please.
Our first speaker this evening, Madam Chair, is Ted Winters, followed by John McGowan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ted Winters. I'm a pastor at Central Presbyterian Church on Hamley Road here in Clayton. I'm also the chaplain at St. Louis County Justice Services, Clayton Jail. I'm celebrating my thirty-fourth year in jails and prisons. Um, I'm here to support the wage increases for the correctional officers at our jail. I've observed over my thirty-four years how difficult that job really is, and the demands, both real and perceived, are exceptional. So I really wanna encourage you all to reward some of these men and women because of their hard work, and they're very underpaid, in my opinion. As a side note, as chaplain, I have not taken, nor do I plan to, any wage. And I wish I could tell you, because that would help out our budget situation, but it would be miniscule. The reason that I don't take a wage is because I have credibility with the men and the women in jailed when they ask me why I'm there, and I tell them, I'm there because I wanna be. So please, I wanna encourage you to vote yes for a wage increase for these men and women in St. Louis County Jail. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, we don't do that, sir. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have fourteen speakers this evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John McGowan, followed by Landis Fisher.
Hello, John McGowan, a member of Central Presbyterian Church, also a volunteer in the jail for a couple of years. And I guess thirty-four is a key number here. I just retired as a professor at St. Louis U for thirty-four years, just this month, so. Uh, happy to do, uh, it's a privilege to do some teaching at the jail, but again, basic economics, a lot of the folks are quitting. There's not enough, they're so understaffed. It's basic econ one oh one. If we raise the wages a little bit, hopefully we'll get some much-needed staffing, because again, without, you know, the, uh, inadequate staff, the whole, the whole prison sort of suffers. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Landis Fisher, followed by Tom Sullivan.
Good evening, everyone, to the council. I am Pastor Landis Fisher of the, uh, actually, I'm of a couple of persuasions of ministry in the St. Louis area. I work with the Friendly Temple Missionary Baptist Church or in, uh, in Wellston. Uh, they're actually not in Wellston. Our church is St. Timothy. We have been in the Wellston area. And now we are out in the Spanish Lake area in, uh, six, three, one, three, eight. And I wanted to speak on behalf of the things that the two previous gentlemen have spoke about. I've had a history of many years back from the early, the late eighties into, up until the present, working with prison ministry. And we'd also like to encourage the council and the voters to support and, uh, pick up those things as best as you can. And we would be willing to, uh, see that it would produce quite a bit of change in the neighborhoods and the culture. And so we just wanted to speak on behalf of wages, benefits, things of that sort that would help in that area, because I have worked, work also as a volunteer uh, in that area, and we have a lot of, uh, things that we would like to do as far as helping with job training, things of that sort, and, and, uh, diversion, uh, theories and things that would work to help with people who are low-level offenders. And, uh, so we wanted to recommend to you and encourage you to, uh, support the people in those areas in the, uh, reconstruction area. I've had a chance to talk with Wesley Bell in his office also about some of these same programs. So I wanted to, uh, give, um, recommendation to the council for supporting the prisons and those entities. Amen. I've had a lot of other work with Mission Gate and many other ministries as well throughout that period. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Azora Liggins.
Madam Chair, members of the council, it was good to see the Port Authority has finally caught on that Jamestown Mall should be torn down before a request for a request for proposal is issued. I've been saying this since 2018 after the first warehouse proposal, but then the Port Authority went ahead with another request for proposals that produced essentially the same warehouse proposal that was previously rejected. By the time, by this time, the mall could have been torn down and a new development underway. Port Authority Chairman John Mopin, who was appointed by County Executive Sam Page, has handled this whole matter badly. Given his checkered past, perhaps that isn't surprising. He was chairman of the Missouri Ethics Commission in 1995, when the state auditor released a scathing audit of the commission. Among other things, the audit accused the commission of failing to enforce the campaign finance disclosure law, hiding information from the public, and given nearly a $10,000 unauthorized payment to an administrator. State auditor also accused the commission's response to the audit as misleading, inaccurate, and designed to divert attention from the auditor's findings. Mr. Mopin was later appointed to the St. Louis County Board of Election Commissions. In 2014, when he was on the board, there was a big mess-up with the distribution of ballots. One race had to be done over. In 2016, with Mr. Mopin still on the board, there was the biggest mess-up ever with county elections. Voters were turned away from many polling places as there were ballot shortages at more than 60 precincts. This resulted in elections being challenged in several cities. A few weeks ago, I mentioned nothing has been heard about the recreation center that was promised in North County more than two years ago. When Hazel Irby was on the council, she was the unlikely sponsor of the bill to give $240 million for the downtown convention center expansion. This was money that could have been used to address needs in St. Louis County. Right before the bill received final approval, it was announced the recreation center was part of the deal. The Post Dispatch was so impressed that on April 15, 2019, it gave it a front-page story. The person representing the St. Louis Convention and Visitors Commission in the deal was Kitty Ratcliffe. I cannot imagine a more untrustworthy person. It is now more than two years later, and no word of any recreation center. The Post did run a story on March 9, 2020, after the council approved a $15.3 million advance for the convention center expansion. The story asked what the holdup was on the center. The story mentioned Ms. Days that you supported the expansion because of the rec center. It also reported that you asked Kitty Ratcliffe about its status at the public hearing before the vote. Ms. Ratcliffe told you it is a work in progress, and that she would be coming back soon with plans. It is now 15 months from that meeting, and two years and two months from the 2019 approval and the first Post Dispatch story. Madam Chair, do you know what's going on with the promised recreation center? Or perhaps the question should be, do you even care? Thank you for listening to my comments.
Our next speaker is Azora Liggins, followed by Queen Doherty.
Good evening. I'm a part of Grassroots. For several decades, we have been working together to press for racial justice, fairness, and integrity in African-American community. We know that the blame for a broken system can be shifted to those who currently haul administrative positions in the government, but the problems were in existence long before your tenure. And blame for a continued failure to eradicate racism here in St. Louis County must be shared by all. Racism has been declared a health care crisis. Like addressing COVID-19, we must operate with urgency and accountability. There is an old saying, change is hard and takes time. COVID-9 taught us, COVID-19 taught us, when change is a priority and urgency is felt, change is embraced and can take place quickly. In St. Louis County, there is a selected group with disproportionate power to make and enforce decisions, access resources, and administer the rules and regulations and laws. These powers have taken a serious toll on the African-American community. We need additional resources to adequately support improving the mindset of this selected group. Giving up privilege and power is not easy. At the June 1 meeting, chairwoman and my councilwoman, Rita Days, called on all of us to examine our sensitivities and prejudices, and asked for a genuine, non-defensive conversation on how to move St. Louis County to a place of fairness for all of us. Many in my community found the start of a conversation moving in the right direction. Educating the St. Louis County residents on the devastation of racism, the devastation racism continues to cause would be beneficial to all. Racism is not just white talking and black. In many instances, it is at its worst when it's black talking and black. Enough is enough. A task force on racism would be a good place to start. Our independent research reveals St. Louis County has never had such a task force. In my closing, I urge this council, again, to add the issue of racism to the weekly agenda so the community at large can participate in the discussion and follow the progress. If this is not possible to add such an issue, please explain in details why. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Queen Doherty, followed by Angie Weagle.
Good evening. I came up here with Azora, talk about racism. My biggest thing is Kemelok, Missouri. That's one of the first black African-American cities in Missouri. It's a shame how bad it looks out there. I want somebody out here to tell me, why haven't anybody out here in Clayton cleaned up Kemelok? All those murders out there, all those kids hungry, we have a center of hope and peace that we feed the hungry and the homeless. We go out there almost every week. All those trash, kids hungry in the street. Who, who, what is our government doing? Because it's a black city out there, that's why they don't care? You all need to do better than this about Kemelok, Missouri. That's where the airport is. That's where the Wright Brothers of Land that flew an airplane out there. That's our history. That's our, I was born out there. I have a problem with that. I want to see better from all of you all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angie Weagle, followed by Jen Carlson.
Hello, my name is Angie Weigle, and I live directly behind the existing 250,000-gallon water tower at 9717 Crestwick Drive. My neighbors and I aren't activists. In fact, this is the first time that any of us have been to a council meeting. I am here this evening to make you aware of the plans to build a 1.5 million-gallon water tower that will be six times the capacity of the existing tower, just 60 feet from our homes. I have concerns about the safety of having a water tower of this magnitude so close to homes and the precedence it will set for future projects. When we first learned of the plans for this new million, one and a half million gallon tank, renderings and photos weren't provided. Upon requesting something that I couldn't understand, I was shocked to realize that the new 110-foot tower is as tall as a nine-story building. That's not much shorter than the building we are currently in. This top-heavy building with a water tank holding a million and a half gallons of water will be built on a half an acre of land. A half an acre of land is about a third of the size of the parking lot just across the street, and the capacity of this water tower will be six times greater than what is currently in place. And again, even more shocking, this will be located 60 feet from my home, where my family lives, plays, and sleeps. Just to put that in perspective, this room is about 50 feet in length. We have been told that we can't fight progress and that Missouri American Water Tower will prevail, but past cases in St. Charles County and St. Louis County are different. Our concerns stem from safety, not from aesthetics or height concerns. The Missouri Department of Natural Resources dictates that a water tower should be no closer than the height, than its height to even a parking lot, as well as homes. Missouri American Water was aware of these regulations before they purchased the land for this new tower in January of '21, and admitted this in a June 17 meeting, but they still proceeded with plans to build at this location. How is this safe? Yes, we acknowledge that we purchased our homes with the existing tower in place, but they aren't replacing with, with a similar tower, are following the current standards and guidelines provided by the Missouri DNR. It will be replaced with a tower six times larger than the one that is there, and it will be 60 feet from our homes. We urge you to deny any building permits that will be submitted to St. Louis County. I'm further hoping that you will help us navigate the processes to ensure that this water tower, or any water tower in the future, is constructed in an area that is safe for your families and your constituents. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, can I ask one question before you step away?
One second.
Is this the water tower in the city limits of Sunset Hills?
Yes, it is.
I just wanted to make sure I was hearing about that one. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Certainly.
Our next speaker is Jen Carlson, followed by Brianna Bomarito.
Bring it forward, this way. My name is Jennifer Carlson. My zip code is 63128. I'm a resident of District 3 in Sunset Hills, and I'm a registered architect. I am here today because it is my duty to shed light on any organization that is disregarding local and state ordinances and design guidelines. And that is exactly what Missouri American Water is doing with the proposed 1.5 million-gallon elevated water tower at 11832 Sappington Barracks Road in Sunset Hills. The Missouri Department of Natural Resources sets minimum standards for community water systems. I have provided a copy of it to you tonight. Those minimum standards specifically address the design and location of elevated water tanks in the state of Missouri. It states in Section 7.0.3, elevated water reservoirs shouldn't be no closer than the overall height from streets, homes, businesses, parking lots, and roads. The proposed Missouri American Water Tower is in violation of this minimum design standard by designing the 110-foot-tall tower 60 feet from our homes and commercial properties. Secondly, the second document is an excerpt from the City of Sunset Hills zoning ordinances, which states that the setback, excuse me, that non-dwelling use abuts a residential zone properly, then the minimum setback shall be as follows. Any buildings over 35 feet in height, not to exceed 60 feet in height, shall be 150 feet plus 10 additional feet setback for every foot over the 35 feet. If you use these requirements, and if you ignore the 60-foot maximum, the 110-foot tower should be 900 feet from our homes. I also brought a copy of the most recent site plan Missouri American Water shared with us in a recent open meeting. As you can see, the, the plan is very accurately misrepresented of how close that water tower will be to our homes. It is a zoomed-in site plan that does not show any of our homes next to it. A plan reviewer is then permitting this water tower on false pretenses. There is no precedent in St. Louis County for a similar situation. The current Sunset Hills Water Tower was built in 1936. This will set a precedent in St. Louis County for what Missouri American Water can get away with. The next project, that's the next oldest water tower, is the one in Ferguson, built in 1939. We are asking for your help in navigating this difficult situation with Missouri American Water and the Missouri Public, the Missouri Public Service Commission.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
Just wrap up if you can. Yeah, please.
As I mentioned, it's our duty to make a conscious effort to uphold the safety of our citizens and my family and my children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brianna Bomarito, followed by May Pang.
Hi, my name is Brianna Bomarito, and I live with my parents and my two 15-year-old brothers at 9709 Crestwick Drive. My mom is a postal carrier and couldn't be here tonight because of her job, so I am here to tell you our worries and ask some questions. The 1.5 million-gallon water tower will be directly behind my house, which means that our house will be within the fall zone of the 110-foot water tower. Someday, when my parents or my brothers want to sell our house, will we be able to, since it will be located within this fall zone? Will the bank even loan us or potential buyers, because the property will be within this fall zone? Why didn't the water company look for other locations or smaller tanks that would be safer for families? Why did the water company ignore the setback requirements of the City of Sunset Hills? Thank you for listening to our questions.
Our next speaker is May Pang, followed by Kim Grabich.
Good evening, Madam Chair, County Executive, and the council members. My name is May Pang, zip code 63128. I live next door to the proposed water tower lot, and my residence is within the 110-foot fall zone. I would like to bring your attention to the area's seismic risk. The information I'm about to share is gathered from the Missouri Geological Survey within the Department of Natural Resources, the Central United States Earthquake Consortium, and the United States Geological Survey. Many people don't realize it, but in Missouri, we have the most active seismic zone east of the Rockies called the New Madrid Seismic Zone. Although we haven't had a large one lately, historically, there's the risk of a big quake. A little bit over 200 years ago, in the winter of 1811 and 1812, a series of three earthquakes measuring between magnitude 7 and 8 occur near the town of New Madrid in southeast Missouri. Thousands of aftershocks follow daily for more than a year. The first big quake was felt from Canada to New Orleans, and as far away as Boston, Philly, and Washington DC. Among the many topographical changes resulted from these earthquakes is an uplift related to the fault near New Madrid, forcing the Mississippi River to flow backwards for three days. Unlike the quakes in LA or San Francisco from faults that are at or near the ground surface, the shaking energy emanating from the New Madrid Zone travels hundreds of miles because the faults here are deep-seated in earth's crust. And because they are deeply buried under the surface, they are less well-understood, more difficult to detect and study. I don't know if you have the map that I asked to hand out. So the map on the left is from the DNR, and that's not easy to understand, but thanks to the Missouri Department of Insurance, we have the map on the right that's simple enough for most people. As you can see, St. Louis County is at hazard level 8, higher than the surrounding counties, and just below the risk levels of the Boot Hill area. What it means is when there is a 7.0 or higher quake, St. Louis area will experience severe shaking and liquefaction, a phenomenon where a large swath of land turns into mush for a while, causing buildings to lose structural integrity. A building contending the weight of 1.5 million gallons of water on top is no exception. The USDS estimates, based on past history and current history, a 7% to 10% chance of a magnitude 7.5 or greater quake in the next 50 years. Unlike other natural events, we can't predict when the earthquakes will happen. It takes only minutes to occur without any event warnings at any time of the day or night. The potential for loss of life and injury due to an earthquake-induced structural failure, with the possibility of the building having passed an onsite inspection just a day before, is undeniable. And safety.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
Almost done.
Can you wrap up, please, pretty quickly?
And safety of the county residents will be jeopardized if building towers of this size are permitted without the enforcement of the setback distance anywhere in the St. Louis County. I ask that the council help us come to a resolution with Missouri Water and the Public Service Commission. Thank you for your time and attention.
Our next speaker is Kim Grabich, followed by Tim O'Brien.
Good evening. My name is Kim Gerbach, and I live in ZIP code 63127, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I'm actually here to represent a statement that my neighbor, who also in Sunset Hills, wrote. Her name is Sandra Anke. She couldn't be here with us tonight. She's not quite COVID-ready to be out yet. But she wanted us to relay her message about earthquakes and the proposed water tower. So you just heard my neighbor talk about the New Madrid seismic fault, so I won't go into that, but unfortunately, the entire state is riddled with other seismic areas which, upon occasion, become active. On May 5, 2008, at 6:25 a.m., an earthquake occurred in the city of Fenton, Missouri, at a depth of 19.4 kilometers and a magnitude of 2.7. The quake started with a rumbling sound, then began moving the house from front to back from 330 to 150 degrees on the compass. As the back-and-forth shaking movement increased, I ran to my hallway door and braced my hands on the northern frame, with my back to the southern side, having difficulty standing. I looked down the 45-foot hall, and I saw its walls displaced at least five inches or more. The north-south structural movement was violent and loud. While the quake's duration was under a minute, it seemed and felt never-ending. As a native St. Louisan, this is the fourth significant earthquake I have experienced. Of the four, the 2008 Fenton quake had the closest epicenter, the smallest 2.7 magnitude, and was by far felt to be the most violent with the longest duration. I live between Fenton and the proposed 1.5 million gallon water tower. Earthquake safety issues regarding the proposed water tower are not totally dependent on seismic activity originating from Missouri's New Madrid seismic fault. The potential for another future seismic event has an epicenter just across the Merriam-Matt River in the city of Fenton. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Our next speaker is Tim O'Brien, followed by Kelly McGowan.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to talk about some of the reasons myself and my fellow brothers and sisters in Corrections eat County Bill 139 to pass. My coworkers and myself are very tired. We are overworked and unpaid. We are overworked because of the forced overtime we are required to do. We are working 12- to 16-hour shifts on a regular basis, and this wouldn't be an issue if it were just once in a while, but it is every day that we are doing this. Just yesterday, 10 people were needed to stay after work after a regular shift. The sad part is that only two of those 10 people were sick calls, people who called out sick. The other eight were just short officers. As of June 17, we were 55 officers short. In March 2020, the world changed. Thank you, COVID, including St. Louis. But one thing didn't change: People still came to jail. As the rest of the county shut down and/or were able to work from home, we didn't. We still stepped up, and we still reported to work. We did this with no hazard pay. Many of our officers were forced to work in housing units full of inmates who were positive with COVID-19. This made this a dangerous job for officers, and even more dangerous, this made a dangerous job for officers even more dangerous, not only for the officers, but now for their families, too. I am an example of that. I caught COVID, and I brought it home to my wife and my family. This created another concern, ones where the officers were out on quarantine, and we couldn't get officers to cover the shifts for two weeks. Yet just another strain on the officers here at St. Louis County. Another issue arose when the courts shut down, and the inmates did not know, and no one could tell us when they would open up again. The already mad and upset inmates began to get even more agitated, not knowing when they were going to get their day in court, not knowing if their bond is or will be reduced so that they could get out of jail. This made for a very hostile environment. Groups of inmates refusing to lock down could have caused riots, could have resulted in riots, just like another jail in our area. We also discontinued the federal contract, which moved over 100 federal inmates out of our jail, and also closed down a floor just so we could have officers available. That freed up 12 officers by evacuating the fifth floor and two supervisors. We didn't have those officers anyway, so it made it easier for us to do it. Prop P was supposed to be used for police and corrections. We were told that we were to receive two raises from that, but we only received one in 2018. We were also advised late last year that we would receive a 3.1 increase starting in January, but as that deadline approached, the story changed to getting merit raises again, but we haven't seen these yet either. Ladies and gentlemen, we're at critical mass at the Department of Justice Services, DEFCON 5, whatever you want to call it. This department is going to implode if we can't hire more officers. This is why County Bill 139 needs to pass, and these are just a few reasons why my peers are running out the door to find other better opportunities in other counties. And those of us who remain here
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
are questioning ourselves if we are making the right decision to stay. Please pass County Bill 139 and let us know you care. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Kelly McGowan, followed by Reverend Philip Duval.
I am Kelly McGowan, and my ZIP code is 63108. Good evening. I'm speaking as a health equity advocate and the Director of Built Environment Advocacy for the entity Evolve, which is an acronym for Elevating Voices of Leaders Vying for Equity. In this role, I work alongside the community, making sure they are included in the processes that shape how their communities are designed. Last summer, this legislative body passed resolutions declaring racism a public health crisis and supporting equitable policies that prioritize the health of all people, especially African-Americans. This is a great step in the right direction, but how does this translate into action? One pressing issue for North County residents, which I have spoken about for weeks, is the overabundance of liquor stores and other businesses that provide alcohol for off-site consumption in their communities. This is now unique to North County. Other predominantly black communities tend to be overrun with liquor stores throughout the country. This is problematic as high liquor store density is associated with various adverse outcomes, including those related to increases in crime. A number of cities throughout the country are finding ways to address this issue. From 2003 through 2007, Atlanta decreased the availability of alcohol, including both off- and on-premises alcohol outlets, by 3% in its Buckhead neighborhood. A peer-reviewed study compared the crime outcome to similar Atlanta neighborhoods, where the number of outlets increased over the same time period. While overall crime was dropping in Atlanta at this time, the Buckhead neighborhood experienced a drop in crime that was two times greater than the decrease in comparable neighborhoods. Could you imagine a similar impact actions like this could have on not only North County, but all of St. Louis County? When North County thrives, St. Louis County wins. Having communities overrun with liquor and convenience stores is not part of this winning strategy. It is imperative that the St. Louis County Council backs their words with action by ensuring the density of liquor stores and similar establishments is monitored and taken into consideration prior to the issuing of new liquor licenses. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and hope we can collaborate to make this happen.
Our final speaker this evening, Madam Chair, is Reverend Philip Duval.
Good evening, County Executive Page and our elected officials. First, Dr. Page, I want to thank you for the opportunity that you afforded me in serving on the advisory board. For the record, I know I stood before you two weeks ago with some concerns relative to the increases that were being asked. I was clear then, and it was clear in my vote Friday, that I support the increases for the correctional officers, and I hope that you would be willing to pass that on. Now, the art of compromise, which I'm not very good at compromising when it comes to integrity, the oversight of how money is spent and how management runs these schedules is what is the issue at hand. The cost of overtime that has been escalating, all we have to do is go back, not just here recently, but even prior to the previous administration, to see what has gone on with the overtime and the management of it. I was very disheartened to know that RFP, we only gleaned one group that wanted to do an audit. My quick comment to that is, Madam Chair, I looked back at the Justice Health and Welfare Committee, in which you had made a statement that maybe at some point the council may need to use subpoena power. I can assure you, after looking over some records and getting some records that Welcome Again, Councilwoman Webb, but I can assure you that that committee was given some erroneous information that was deceitful, and it came from a high-ranking official over there, and I'm willing to provide that. Why do I feel I have to come here in a public way and say it? Because I've been very patient, very cooperative. I've turned over documents before in support of trying to get things unturned truthfully, and I don't feel that I get well-served with the documents that I turn over just to keep it in some way, as the county council likes to say, "Well, stop it because I can't opine." You can't opine what I'm thinking. So if you keep telling me what I can't say, then the only way I can say it is to come in here for my three minutes and let it be known on the public record. So I look forward to passing on that information relative to how deceitful some of the statements that were made in last year's Public Health and Safety Committee that I think you will find reveal it. Now, if, I see I'm running out of time, so I will say this, that unless civil service rules change that often and they're that flexible, there are just some people that are not entitled to doing certain things and then blaming it on, we had to hurry up and do it because we were told that person had grievance rights. And that's enough on that. Again, I'll provide it to you, Councilwoman, and to you, Madam Chair, because at this point, I don't feel comfortable sharing information that doesn't appear to go much further than certain floors in this building. Lastly, I'll say, the county police
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
If we can just make this real, the county police commissioners make it extremely difficult to come on the record and say whatever we need to say. Now, I've been told and preached to for many years about the commissioners or the Civil Review Board. If they're going to be the civilian review board, they need to have access to the civilians who want to talk to them. I'm running out of time and patience, but it's gone on with that investigator needs to be brought to bear, and I'm talking about the investigator that put away Lamar Johnson that is still serving life in prison. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, that is all our speakers.
Thank you all for coming this evening and giving us your opinions and sharing your concerns with us. We really appreciate that. And we'll move on right now to the county executive.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who's gotten their COVID-19 vaccine. St. Louis County, in St. Louis County, about half of those eligible for the vaccine have received at least one dose, and that's well above the statewide percentage and shows what great progress we're making in getting more shots in arms. On the flip side, though, that means that half of our residents are not vaccinated against the virus. And with the new Delta variant, we're seeing an uptick in cases and illnesses from COVID, especially for our young people who haven't had access to the vaccine as long as some of our older residents. In St. Louis County, only 32% of those between the ages of 12 and 18 have had one dose of the vaccine. When you look at week-over-week numbers, the cases of COVID in St. Louis County have increased 20%. And these new cases are preventable. We have vaccines that are safe, effective, and free. Yesterday, Washington University, which has been a great partner in our response to the pandemic, released a study further suggesting that the vaccines offer months-long immunity from the virus. The continued research is promising on the long-lasting effect the vaccines have and their effectiveness against new variants. Our children will be heading back to the classroom this fall, and those 12 and older are eligible for the vaccine. Now is the time to get the shot. Consider it part of your back-to-school routine. This is arguably the most important tool that your students need for the new school year. We continue to make vaccines easier to get in St. Louis County, partnering with faith-based groups, nonprofits, and companies to bring the shots directly to those who need them. On Saturday, the Department of Public Health worked with Centene to provide vaccines at their location in Ferguson. Next week, we'll sponsor a vaccination clinic with youth on the rise to help vaccinate younger at-risk county residents. Like we did with testing, we continue looking at ways to give shots to our most vulnerable and to those who have historically been negatively impacted by health outcomes. Equity continues to be our priority in our response, and we will continue our efforts to make vaccines accessible to everyone. And that's why we have a homebound program, and that's why we created outreach groups comprised of community members with trusted relationships. And that's why we are planning a block-by-block, door-to-door campaign in vulnerable neighborhoods to ensure residents have the information they need about the vaccine and to ensure that they have access to a shot. The county and its partners have done a great job in a few months to get 420,000 St. Louis County residents vaccinated, but our work is far from over. Finally, I'd like to congratulate our Metro Transit for putting 18 electric buses on the road today. With these new buses, Metro Transit is providing transportation that is cleaner, quieter. These new buses are part of Metro Transit's ongoing commitment to a greener, more environmentally-friendly St. Louis region. Thousands of our residents depend on public transit to get back and forth from work and from school. Buses crisscross our region and provide important independence and opportunities. Largely funded by a federal grant, St. Louis County joined St. Louis City and St. Clair County to provide the remainder of the matching funds to purchase these buses. This is a partnership to be proud of. This is a partnership to safeguard our future, and this is a partnership for the health of our region. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to introduction of bills.
Bill Number 174, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $1,418,743 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, appropriating the same for support of the Department of Human Services' continuum of care programs, and authorizing the county executive and the director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 175, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Formula grant of up to $35,674 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of training for police crime lab employees and purchase of a forensic field station, and authorizing the county executive and the superintendent of police to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 176, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Standard Insurance Company for administration of employee long-term and short-term disability insurance services, and authorizing the county executive and the director of the Department of Administration to execute necessary documents. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you very much. Moving on to perfection. Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill Number 20 is held. Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trakus. Bill Number 32 is held. Bill Number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
So this is the electric vehicle charging bill that I've been working on. We do have a draft of a substitute bill that I would like to circulate to everyone in advance of a committee of the whole, which I would like to officially request tonight sometime soon. We'll follow up tomorrow, but I just wanted to get that on the record before moving to hold Bill Number 75.
Bill Number 75 is held. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 77.
Can't hear.
I think if I am reading your lips correctly, you want to hold Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 77. It's held. Thank you.
Thank you.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 88.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 88 is held. Bill Number 139, introduced by Councilmember Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to hold Bill Number 139. Bill Number 139 is held.
Bill Number 156, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill Number 156. Hold.
All right. Bill Number 156 is held. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Number 164, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Bill Number 164.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 164 is perfected.
Bill Number 165, introduced by Councilmember Days.
Move to perfect Bill Number 165.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion, 165 is perfected.
Bill Number 166, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
Before I make a movement on this bill, I want to make sure everybody is aware that this is the bill for the Vaccination Incentive Program. We have addressed the questions, not only from my peers on the council, but I've also spoke to community members that was here in the previous council meeting to ensure that the reason that we're going forth and I'm pushing forth for this vaccination incentive program is that nothing beats a failure but a try. And we have to try to vaccinate as many people in our community as possible, not just for ourselves but for others. And so with that, I move to, uh, I move to perfect Bill Number 166.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Councilman Tracus.
Yes, I admire Councilwoman Webb's interest and passion to have as many people vaccinated as possible. As I said, I have a problem with incentive programs generally. I view them as another word for coercion. So cannot support the bill because I do not think it is fair to entice people to perhaps change their mind or do something they wouldn't otherwise be willing to do. Further, I'm sorry, further satisfied that there's enough protections in this bill to make sure that once someone is incentivized, they actually get the vaccine. So for those reasons, I'll be voting against it, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch.
Thank you. I did speak with Councilwoman Webb about this and told her what my concerns were as far as making sure the program is handled properly. I would normally agree with a lot of what Councilman Tracus said, however, I also believe that if Councilwoman Webb thinks this is important to get people vaccinated in her council district, then I would support that. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Webb?
I move to invoke Rule 19 to suspend Rule 8 to advance Bill Number 166 to final passage.
I think we have to vote on-
We have to vote.
Right, your perfection first.
We have to call the vote.
You have to ask for the perfection.
You moved-
She did ask.
I did.
I don't think you moved to-
We didn't take a vote.
She did.
You did. Was there a second? I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
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 No.
Chairs in doubt, please roll, call the roll.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, was your vote an aye?
Aye, yes, it was.
On the vote to perfect Bill Number 166, there are five ayes and two noes.
Thank you. Bill Number 166 is perfected.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to invoke Rule 19 to suspend Rule 8 to advance Bill Number 166 to the final passage order of business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, on the motion to invoke, yes, in the vote, motion to invoke Rule 19 to suspend Rule 8 to advance Bill Number 166 to the final passage order of business, there are five ayes and two noes.
The motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Webb?
Madam Clerk, would you read the bill?
Bill Number 166, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 166.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, on the motion to finally pass Bill Number 166, there are five ayes and two ayes.
Bill Number 166 is finally passed.
Moving on to Bill Number 167, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 167. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 167 is perfected.
Bill Number 168, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 168. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 168 is perfected.
Bill Number 169, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 169. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 169 is perfected.
Bill Number 170, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 170.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 170 is perfected.
Bill Number 171, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 171.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 171 is perfected.
Bill Number 172, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 172. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 172 is perfected.
Bill Number 173, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 173, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 173 is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill Number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill Number 320.
Bill Number 320 is held.
Bill Number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill Number 14, please.
Bill Number 14 is held.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 76.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 76 is held.
Bill Number 220, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please drop Bill Number 220 from the agenda.
Bill Number 220 is dropped from the agenda.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 131, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 131.
I'm sorry, are you moving to hold that?
Final passage.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Excuse me. Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, on Bill Number, on Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 131, there are six ayes and one no.
Substitute Bill, Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number-
131.
131?
Yes, ma'am.
Is finally passed.
Bill Number 143, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 143, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the amount of $276,146.71 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for support of seven additional attorney positions in the office of the county councillor.
I want to take a moment to speak about this subbill because it is an example of the best tradition of how a legislative body should work. This has been a controversial topic. I want to thank Councilman Harder for working with me, trying to find a common ground, a middle ground, from what was originally proposed, my bill and what we have here today, which is, I believe, appropriating money for five positions, if I'm correct on that. So it's two less positions, but nonetheless, five new attorney positions for the county councillor's office that's desperately needed. It's my understanding that at least one of those positions will be focused on problem properties, which is an important issue for many of us on the council. But again, this is just a great example of what can happen when we try to find common ground, wherever that may be. So again, I thank Councilman Harder for his efforts to work with me. With that, Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 143.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. And this is for the council. I am looking at the bill, the ordinance, and the title is saying seven, however, in the body, it is saying five.
You're absolutely correct. I would ask that the clerk, as it was intended, with five instead of seven.
Is that, is that something that we are allowed to do at this point? Do we not have to go back? We don't have to go back and redo the substitute?
It's fine if you read it the way it is intended, and then the script is there.
I will read it again.
Thank you.
Okay. Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 143, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the amount of $276,146.71 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for support of five additional attorney positions in the office of the county councillor.
Madam Chair, I'll reiterate my motion that we adopt Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 143.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Another question for the councillor's office, does it matter that the dollars in the bill do not add up properly?
The line items?
Yeah, if you add up the line items, it's different if you add those up. And it's not by much, it's by a penny, but it's wrong. It's different. Does that need to be corrected?
We can definitely correct that by interlaying the same way. Is it sent too many or too less?
It should be 72.
I'm happy if it's 71, I would be happy to take that as well.
Okay.
If it's 72, we can certainly fix that by interlaying.
So I understand you want to keep it at 71 as it states, or do you want to change it? Okay, all right. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder?
I guess I have a question, looking at this historically, I didn't know that we could change these things on the fly like this. I thought it had to be read properly, written properly, before we can vote on these things. So I want to make sure we're clear.
Because the vote has not been taken and it is-
But it wasn't read properly. She read it as seven.
She just reread it? And it was five.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair? Yes, ma'am. So I wanted to speak on this specifically because when I, we first, Councilman Tracus first brought this legislation to the body, it was stating that two of, at the time, it was two of the seven attorneys were going to be designated for problem properties. And everyone knows that I'm concerned about problem properties because it hits North County extremely hard. But I didn't want this legislation to just be of words but actually of action. And so I reached out to the councillor's office, to Ms. Beth, and I said, "Ms. Beth, give me details on how you're going to iterate or implement this program so that we know for certain that it's going to impact in better what's going on in the problem property units." And so I won't read all of the feedback, but it did meet my question and my concerns of how they were going to implement and have attorneys serve for problem properties. And so these were some of my type issues. It was going to organize proactively and reactively, communication such as phone calls with people who are committing problem properties. We have a hard time reaching people that's out of state to follow up and make sure that they are held accountable for their violations. It was going to work collaboratively, collaboratively with the council, transportation, and public works, human services, and health departments, the police department, and community engagement unit before court intervention. And lastly, it was going to seek feasible feasibility of diversion court, for example, mental health courts in situations with hoarders. So I wanted some teeth behind what you said that the problem properties unit, I mean, attorneys, were going to do as they serve the problem property units. And for that, I am grateful and thankful for you doing that, and I do support the giving attorneys for the councillor's office.
Councilman Fitch?
Thank you. Question for the county councillor. Will this end your request for outside legal counsel, except for things that we routinely see, for like bond counsel? Will this end that if we pass this?
I, every case is different. Every case has a different specialty. There are conflicts that do arise that we do see come before this council. There are areas of highly specialized law that would be best interest of the county to seek outside counsel. Those are things I'm happy to bring to you and to look at. And so this is, this goes a long way.
So I think I understand, as a lawyer, answer, but, so basically, yes, you may be coming to us for outside legal counsel in spite of, if this passes, getting five additional attorneys for your office.
If it's in the best interest of the county, it is my duty by the charter to do that and to seek that from the council. However, I do recognize this goes a long way to filling our legislation department, and I am encouraged by that greatly.
And one last question is, originally, this was, you asked for five. Councilman Tracus subbed it for seven. Now we're back to five. Are you going to be coming back to us again, asking for two additional attorneys?
I'm very interested in the problem properties, and as I communicated with Councilmember Webb, I think that that could be rounded out. And I think I've communicated this with Council Chair, Chair's Day's office, that could be increased. I think that would be a benefit to the county. I think that this is a good start. I can't make any promises, but I think that this is a wonderful start, and I'm very grateful that you would all consider this.
And I said it was one last thing, but Thursday, we had on our calendar for a meeting with you about the budget, but I think you were in court or some, did we get that resolved?
Waiting to, I've been communicating with the chair's aide about my schedule, and it's still very much in flux, but I'm hopeful I'll be able to be there.
I mean, obviously, there's certainly some questions that we may want to ask in a more in-depth type of committee of the whole that we're not going to get a chance, and I don't know if the intent is to pass this tonight or just approve the sub, and maybe it's a question for the sponsor.
I intend to move it for passage tonight.
So, so there's really no, if it passes tonight, there's no reason to have that meeting on Thursday. Is that right?
I was told that it was to discuss the budget year-to-date. I will take my lead from the council, and I'm always happy to talk.
Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Tracus?
Just so the record's clear here, unequivocally clear, the amount of money we're talking about in this bill represents less than one one-thousandth of a percent of the total county budget on an annual basis.[1782.26] So let's not get lost in the idea that we're authorizing a huge amount of money here. We're authorizing a reasonable amount of money to provide additional personnel to an office that desperately needs it. And I don't want to get sidetracked with this perception that somehow we're trying to get around the budget process. I fully expect the councilor's office is going to come back here to us with an annual budget that may well include additional attorney spots. That's all well and good, and we'll deal with that when it comes. But this bill is needed now, and we're talking about, according to the county comptroller and budget director, a statistically insignificant amount of money. So please, let's just move forward with it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Fitch.
And just to add, yes, it is a small amount in the scheme of things, but it's only good to the end of the budget year. And these five positions would then be added, I would assume, through the budget in 2022. So it's not like it's a one-time expense. This will be an ongoing expense of five additional attorneys. Is that right, Ms. Orwick?
That's my intent, yes.
And it will always remain less than one one thousandth of a percent of the total county budget, even on an annual basis going forward, anyway.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Webb.
Yes ma'am. So I also thought it was, it's value-added in this conversation that we shared before our community, that when I talked with Mrs. Beth, that we are wanting to make sure that our county council's office have the talent that they need in order to address the concerns of the county and the issues. So we won't have to keep seeking out outside counsel. My intention is not that to support this bill and then two months later, we want outside counsel again, or three months later, we want outside counsel again. We talked in depth, and we was in open and transparency to each other, that her goal is to make sure she builds a strong county council office. Just as we saw the gentleman with all that experience, Lee, forty years of experience, she's going to get that talent in those resources so we don't have to keep going out to, going back to outside counsel. Now, I know that takes time to build, but entrusting you with your word to say that we're going to build that talent, we're going to diversify that office, that is why I'm standing to support, not to come back here three and four months later, asking for more outside counsel. That is not the intent. And so I want to be clear with my understanding in that conversation that we had.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, the last, I will have the last comment on this, and I have recognized that of the need for the council's office, it still does not address the fact that you have very few African-American lawyers within your cadre of lawyers, and that, and that is very important to me, that we have diversity as we look to that. And I know you have said you're working with the mound city. That still does not put the, put the African-American lawyers in your office. So I hear what you're saying. You're working toward, you're getting them workshops, and you're doing all these other things, but still, there is not a, an African-American influence in terms of you getting those in your office. So I do appreciate that. Thank you. Any, anything else? Your motion was to adopt the substitute. It has been moved. And second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. The Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 143 is adopted. Councilman, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to know if the no votes wanted to be recorded as no votes?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Okay, well, they usually aren't when a motion carries.
Do you want a roll call on that?
No, I just need to know.
That's fine.
I just need to know who voted no.
I voted no.
I voted no.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. Move to invoke Rule 19 to suspend Rule 9 in order to take up Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 143 on the final passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
No.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to invoke Rule 19 to suspend Rule 9, there are five ayes and two against.
Thank you. Motion carries. Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. I move for final passage of Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 143.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
No.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 143, there are five ayes and two noes.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 143 is finally passed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Bill Number 151, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
For, one moment, please. Move for final passage of Bill Number 151.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Abstain.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 151, there are six ayes and one abstention.
Bill Number 151 is finally passed.
Bill Number 155, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 155.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 155, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 155 is finally passed.
Bill Number 157, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 157. Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 157, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 157 is finally passed.
Bill Number 158, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 158. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 158, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 158 is finally passed.
Bill Number 159, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 159. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 159, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 159 is finally passed.
Bill Number 160, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 160. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair, on Bill Number 160, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 160 is finally passed.
Bill Number 161, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 161.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 161, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 161 is finally passed.
Bill Number 162, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 162. Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
All, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 162, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 162 is finally passed.
Bill Number 163, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill 163.
Second, Tracus.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 163, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 163 is finally passed. I think we had the only one resolution. We've done that one, so we will move on to new business.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business, I'm sorry.
Item number one.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Seventh District.
Please hold.
The order.
Item number three.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number five.